Good evening. I now call the January 15th, 2020 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present and accounted for. The next item is our invocation, and for that I turn it over to our student liaison, Paul Karnick.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Joining us tonight to give our invocation is Ricky Lassiter III from Barron Fundamental Elementary School. Go ahead.
May you please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated. Good evening to all Hampton City School Board leaders, administrators, and staff. My name is Ricky Lassiter. I want to first thank you for all allowing me to speak this evening. I am grateful for my principals, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Wyatt, and my fourth, my fifth grade teacher, Ms. Benelli, for seeing that I can accomplish all my skills and goals and seeing that I can learn all I need to succeed through elementary school. This is my final year at Barron Elementary School, and I promise to make it count and do my very best. Many attendants have already grown stronger in their academics and plan to continue developing good character too. As class president, I want to speak on behalf of Barron students by saying that we live up to our school creed. Now I would like to end my time reading a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ricky, I just want to ask you a few questions. So first, what grade are you in at Barron?
Fifth grade.
Okay, excellent. So you're in fifth grade. Have you thought about what middle school you want to attend yet?
Eden Middle School.
And so what is your career? What do you want to be when you grow up?
NBA basketball player.
About to get the next Allen Iverson here. He said that, when I talked to him really, he said that he wanted to play for Hampton High School first, which is the place to play. So I appreciate that. Thank you. And if there, could you introduce us to your family?
My mom, my dad, and my brothers, may please stand.
And if there are any administrators or school personnel that are supporting Ricky here tonight, I would invite you to please stand. Thank you.
Are there any comments from board members? Let me just say to the Lassiter family, thank you so much for allowing us to have Ricky with us tonight. I tell you, when you talked about intelligence plus character, that sums it up. Ricky, you did a fantastic job. I knew you would. When I came down and spoke with you earlier, I could just tell you didn't need to talk to me. You were ready to go. So thanks again. And parents, I know you all have things to do. You've got brothers and sisters, and it is a school night. So we can understand if you want to just slip out during the rest of the meeting. But again, thank you so much for being here. The next item of business is the adoption of the agenda, item 1.03. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's agenda as presented. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. For the next item of business, we turn to recognitions, and that will be done by our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Kelly Gore, and she will be assisted tonight by board member Dr. Richard Mason.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, Dr. Smith, School Board, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. It is our pleasure to recognize a special group of educators this evening, our National Board Certified Teachers. Through National Board Certification, teachers demonstrate that their teaching meets the profession's standards for accomplished practice through a rigorous, peer-reviewed, and performance-based process, similar to professional certification in fields such as medicine. So in achieving board certification, teachers prove their ability to advance student learning and achievement.
Now, National Board Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education and provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. While teacher licensure systems set the basic requirements to teach in each state, completion of National Board Certification signifies that teachers have voluntarily gone further. National Board Certified Teachers have developed and demonstrated the advanced knowledge, skills, and practices required of an outstanding educator.
And as Dr. Mason said, it's really showing that they've gone much further. It is a very rigorous process. So this year, we are proud to recognize two of our Hampton City Schools teachers who have earned their National Board Certifications for the first time. So would you please join us on stage as we call your name? First, we have Ms. Lindsay McCabe, a special education teacher, right here from Jones Magnet Middle School. We'll have you line up right off on the other side, Dr. Mason, for us. And we also have April Tran, a reading specialist from Armstrong School for the Arts. Now, we gave applause as they were walking up, but let's give them a really big round of applause. Now, before we pass out, we have certificates. In addition to these two professionals standing before us who are newly certified, Hampton City Schools is proud to recognize four additional staff members who earned their renewal certification. So please join us on stage when your name is called. We have Tracy Bourne, an onstage Performing Arts Academy Theater Pathway Teacher from Kickitane High School. We have Ms. Roxanne Brown, an art teacher from Hampton High School, and I don't believe she could join us tonight, but we still need to give her a good round of applause. We have Ms. Jeanette Coons, a music specialist from Machen Elementary School. And again, I don't think she was able to join us, but definitely wanted to recognize her. And last but not least, we have Keith Harrington, an Advanced Placement World History and Advanced Placement Psychology Teacher from Kickitane High School.
I put my papers down. Let me borrow yours for a sec. So on behalf of our Chair, Mrs. Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Smith, please accept these certificates of recognition for this wonderful accomplishment. I'll give that back to you. All right. Okay. And it says, "Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Lindsay McCabe of Jones Magnet Middle School, National Board Certification." And it says the exact same thing for Ms. April. And I'll read this one only because this is a different one. It says, "Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Tracy Bourne, Kickitane High School, Renewal of National Board Certification." And just because I called everybody else's name, I'm going to call Keith Harrington's name on the renewal of his National Board Certification as well. We are proud of each of you. We know the rigorous process to become a National Board Certified Teacher is no simple task. It certainly takes a great deal of time and effort to accomplish. We thank each of you for pushing yourselves professionally to ultimately advance student learning and achievement for our Hampton City Schools students. Let's give this magnificent group a big round of applause.
Before you all are seated, we'd actually like to recognize the important, not you all can sit, not that one. You all sit, no. Before our honorees are seated. We'd like to recognize a special guest in the audience that are here supporting you. So at this time, would any family members, fellow teachers, colleagues, administrators, these National Board Certified Teachers who are in the audience, would you please stand to be recognized? We've got lots of great supporters out. And also, another individual we would like to recognize is Dr. Kim Richardson. Dr. Richardson would please stand. Dr. Richardson is Hampton City Schools Teacher Development Coordinator, who basically oversees the National Board Certified Teacher Program for Hampton City Schools and is a huge support and cheerleader for all of our teachers. So please join me in a round of applause for Dr. Richardson. And before you leave, just one last time, congratulations. You won an accomplishment. Thank you. May I have a seat? Madam Chair, that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Mason. Great job. And Ms. Gore, of course, great job always. Any comments from board members? I think I probably should say on behalf of the board how excited we are to have our nationally board certified teachers, especially the ones who, for the first time, are getting certification. You're joining an elite group, and it is very exciting when we have educators in this school division who go above and beyond the daily teaching day-to-day that says, basically, "I want to be better. I want to improve. I want to be the best." So again, we want to give you a big round of applause. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of item 3.01, Personnel Report Number 20-01, 3.02, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of December 4, 2019, 3.03, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of December 18, 2019, and 3.04, Certification of the Closed Session of December 4, 2019. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is presented.
Second. It has been properly moved by Dr. Woodhouse and second by Ms. Henry that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item for business consists of superintendent and staff reports, and for that, I'd like to turn it over to our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm excited, Superintendent, to, at this particular time, ask Dr. Haines to come forward, who's serving certainly as our Executive Director at the secondary level, and he will introduce this particular presentation as it relates to One Division, One Transformation. As you'll recall, we certainly have been focusing our energy and effort certainly at the high school level in the areas of transforming teaching and learning, but also a keen focus in terms of student engagement, transforming that, plus civic and business engagement. But when we think about it as a school division, it's more than just the teaching and learning at the high school and the student experience at the high school level, as well as more than certainly civic and business engagement at the high school. So it's an overall One Division and One Transformation. Tonight, Dr. Haines will introduce the presentation, and we're excited to share the continued work in this area.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairwoman Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, School Board Members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton Community. This evening is not your traditional Academies of Hampton update, but we will return in the coming months, or next month, with an update and implementation progress reports for you. As a division and community, we continue to work together to transform Hampton City Schools, high schools, into wall-to-wall academies to prepare our students in success in careers, lifelong learning, and life. To implement this high school redesign, we are focused on bringing together three transformative strands: teaching and learning, what it means to learn in Hampton City Schools; the secondary school experience, what it feels like to go to school in Hampton City Schools; and business and civic engagement, what it means to be engaged in Hampton City Schools. The backbone of this student-driven, future-focused learning model is project-based and challenge-based learning. These hands-on learning models create opportunities for students to drive inquiry as they work alongside teachers and business partners to address an industry need. As you are aware, we have been putting structures into place to create more project-based and challenge-based learning opportunities for our students. And this evening, we would like to present to you our biggest challenge yet. I'm eager to unveil this challenge, but we have asked Captain Barrington Irving, the CEO and founder of Flying Classroom, to present to you this evening. By no means is Captain Irving a stranger to Hampton City Schools. He has worked alongside Dr. Kelly Sito, our Curriculum Leader for English and Language Arts, and Mr. Daryl Rogers, our Out-of-School-Time Coordinator, to create innovative out-of-school-time experiences for our students, and he is quickly becoming a member of the Hampton Community. We can actually just adopt him as a Hamptonian. I'm not going to read Captain Irving's bio, as I traditionally would introduce him, because there's nothing traditional about what is coming next. What I will say is that as we enter into the final phase of our transformation, we have elicited the support of someone who has transformed history and is committed to transforming the future as we work together to make history. Please join me in welcoming Captain Barrington Irving.
Good evening, Chairwoman Cherry, Vice Chairman Kilgore, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Smith, and the Hampton Community. I'm very excited about honestly being here and having the opportunity to share a little bit with you all. In 2007, I set a Guinness World Record to become the youngest person and the first black man to fly solo around the world. I'm also a National Geographic Explorer, and with all those accolades, I honestly just stand here in front of you all simply to highlight, I was one of those students who constantly asked themselves the question, "When will I ever use this in life?" When I sat in class, I constantly asked myself that question, and to get to know this community and have a number of different successes here within Hampton City Schools, I'm honored to be here to share with you all. But before I do that, I'd first like to highlight, let's see. It's on. Let me try again. This was on. Might have to hit the forward arrow first. There we go. So this is me as a kid. I'll just do a quick recap. I was born in Kingston, Jamaica, moved to Miami, Florida at the age of six. That's me there with my Duke of Hazzard lunchbox. And while growing up in Miami, I grew up in two of the three worst neighborhoods in Miami. That was Liberty City and Opa-locka, Florida. I played football for a team called Miami Northwestern Senior High School, where ranked number one in the state of Florida, went on to be ranked number one in the entire country. And this is what I thought my path would be. Until one day, I'm in a store minding my own business, and I see this gentleman step out of a white Lincoln Navigator, dressed in this uniform, walked into the store, and I'm staring at him, saying to myself, "This guy looks like he makes a ton of money." Had no clue what he did. He saw that I was staring at him, and he walked over to me and said to me, "Hey, son, have you ever thought about becoming a pilot?" First words out of my mouth, I said, "Sir, I don't think I'm smart enough to fly an airplane." But I asked him one pivotal question, and that question was, "How much money do you make?" When he answered that question, I took an interest in aviation. But of course, behind every successful individual, there's an educator. And this woman you see standing behind me, her name is Ms. Bateese. She was my social studies teacher. Take a close look at her face. You see how she's not smiling? I had a hard time with Ms. Bateese when I was in school. See, Ms. Bateese saw more potential in me than I saw in myself, and she constantly nagged me to forget about football and pursue a career in aviation. So I ended up turning down a football scholarship to the University of Florida, said I'd pursue a career in aviation, and Ms. Bateese helped me apply to my local community college. Then I transferred over to an HBCU, Florida Memorial University, and received my bachelor's degree in aeronautical science. During that period of time, my mentor challenged me to give back, and I said to my mentor, "I don't have any money to give." And he taught me the value of sharing my knowledge, sharing my experiences, and just get out into the community. And that's when I said I wanted to fly around the world. For two and a half years, people told me, "No, what you see on the screen is one of my rejection letters." Came from Coca-Cola. Right? I sent in a proposal saying I wanted to fly around the world, and they sent me back a response. "Here at the headquarters, we focus on events and programs that are national or international in scope when considering sponsorship requests." They never read the letter, because last I checked, flying around the world is national and international. So I realized people weren't paying attention. It was the one pair of dress shoes I owned at the time with three holes in the bottom of them. Saved them till this day to remind me of where I came from. And I wore these shoes to major aviation events like this one, walking from booth to booth, trying to figure out, "How exactly can I fly around the world?" In order to fly around the world, the first thing you need is an airplane. This was my first plane. It cost $650,000. I couldn't afford this plane, and I couldn't get anyone to just write a check to support it. So I took something negative in my community and turned it into something positive. I was never a part of this growing up, but I saw it happening all the time. When someone steals a vehicle, what do they do? They immediately strip the car for parts. That's how I learned about manufacturing. Yes, I understand, that's a messed-up way to learn about manufacturing, but that's how I learned. And what I discovered was, different companies make different parts of a car. They're called original equipment manufacturers. So I said to myself, "I wonder if different companies make different parts of a plane." There were 42, 41 different companies who made different parts of this aircraft, from the propeller to the engine, navigation system, $70,000, engine, $83,000, four seats in the plane, $30,000, air conditioning, $20,000, the list went on and on and on. And I approached these companies one by one, and instead of asking them for money, I simply asked them for the one part that they manufactured. It was a long shot. No one thought it could work, but I was able to convince 41 different companies to just give me the one part they manufactured, piece the plane together, and then fly around the world solo. At the time, the youngest person was 37 years of age, was able to accomplish it at the age of 23. I do want to highlight, I worked with a great team of people based in Miami, Florida, and Houston, Texas, in order to pull this off. No weather radar, no de-icing. I'd sit in that position for as long as 12, 13 hours at a time, set a Guinness World Record, extremely happy, traveled to different parts of the world. But then, something happened. And what happened is, I thought it was my turn to make $117 an hour after I flew around the world. But a teacher wrote in a letter to my team, and she thanked me for flying around the world. She didn't have a map in her classroom. She went to Walmart, purchased a shower curtain with the world on it. As I flew to different parts of the world, she wrote on it and highlighted all the different places I went to and created lessons. She thanked me for inspiring students, but she asked us, "Can we empower them?" And it took me a while to figure out what exactly I needed to do, and I was just so touched by her letter, and this was the first project we did. We took 60 kids from failing schools within Miami, and we challenged them to build an airplane from scratch, no background in aviation, no nothing. I was 24 years old at the time. These kids came together, built this airplane from scratch in 10 weeks, and then we flew it on its first flight. A process that easily takes a year and a half to two years to accomplish. Started seeing different success stories. For example, young lady on the left-hand side, Bakari, when she started out with me, couldn't point out a half an inch on a ruler. Graduated from Duke University as a math major, makes over $130,000 a year, and now when I see her every Christmas, we talk about taxes. The same girl who couldn't point out a half an inch on a ruler. Young man in the middle on the right-hand side as well, Trenton, lost his father to cancer, had a number of different confidence issues. He was interested in aviation, wasn't sure if he could make it, ended up graduating from the Air Force Academy, and now he flies fighter jets. So we're starting to have these different success stories in a number of different parts, not just Miami, Florida, but in different parts of the nation. And I said, "Well, what can I do with students at the younger levels as well?" So we did a project where we challenged kids to build a car faster than a Ferrari 430 Spider. This was built by fifth graders through eighth graders. The Ferrari 430 Spider, 0 to 60 in 3.3 seconds, this car does it in 2.7 to 2.9 seconds. Was a success. We then started to experiment and replicate in different parts of the country, Dallas, Houston, even places like Detroit. With all those things we were able to accomplish with students, we conquered the air, did pretty well on land with the race cars, and there was one part left, and that's C. But I had to find the right community in order to take on this next challenge. Didn't know when it would happen, but after coming to this community a number of different times, working with students, working with leaders, hearing feedback from community members and so forth, it hit me. The challenge that we will place within Hampton City Schools is to get students together from the academies and challenge them to transform a houseboat into a floating STEM lab. This can be done. Never done it before, but with all the people sitting behind me, I'm very confident this can be done. can be done. Why? This community is surrounded by water. This community is surrounded by different challenges, from invasive species to rising sea levels, a number of different researches going on. But the greatest amongst all these things, this community is surrounded by this industry. One of the things wealthy people do with their children, they do not teach them about careers, they teach them about industry. And we have an opportunity to do more than transform a houseboat into a STEM lab. We have an opportunity to leverage partners locally in the community to be able to accomplish this project. Now, it will be demanding. It will require various aspects and pathways within the academies, not just construction, not just shipbuilding. We're going to be working with quite a few of the different academies in order to pull this off. For example, marketing plays a huge component in this. Right? Legal aspect plays a huge component in this. But these are real-world learning experiences for students that can be accomplished. How do I know it can be accomplished? Well, as part of our Flying Classroom curriculum, this is one of our expeditions we recently did a few months ago. What you're looking at is more than an airplane. That's a flying eye hospital. They transformed this plane into a flying eye hospital, and that was my patient. And I want to play a quick, short video clip of what they actually do to impact their community.
Flying Classroom, I'm in Kingston, Jamaica, my homeland and country of birth. I'm working with Orbitz, the Flying Eye Hospital. Dino, in the Caribbean and throughout the world, over two-hundred-and-fifty-three million people battle blindness. This is the Flying Eye Hospital. It's an onboard eye care facility that's able to give the highest level of eye care, no matter where we are in the world. But it's really designed to teach. We've got a classroom and now a state-of-the-art simulation center.
I can show you whenever the eye moves.
Oh, it moves like a real eye.
It moves like a real eye, right there.
Already on the first day post-op, we saw that he could see about twenty-fourty, which means that he could really drive a car. That was his only eye. And that's a big, big difference from going from legally blind to being able to drive one day after surgery.
So, that's just one example. What exactly will this vessel contain? We're not sure yet, but we're working with the various arms of the academies to define it. It will be multi-use, and it will serve a purpose within this community. And we have great industry partners like Newport Shipbuilding that are happy to support and embrace a project like this. The other aspect of what we're going to do within the academies, and we'll have to forward this slide here. Thank you so much. As part of Flying Classroom, part of what we do is we transform our airplanes into a real-life magic school bus, fly around the world to practically explore core standards kids have to learn in the classroom. Now, I'm not going to share all the expeditions with you. We've traveled to every continent except for Antarctica, and we just, we just found out what we'll actually explore there. But this is a collage of some of the different expeditions that we've done. I have two of my videographers here as well, who do a great job making this inspiring and engaging for young people. So, here's an example of one. Here in this image, you see a man in a dumpster. But we leveraged this opportunity in San Diego, California, to teach kids about food, waste, and bacteria. We spent forty-eight hours eating out of dumpsters in San Diego, California. In our first hour of dumpster diving, we found over five-hundred pounds of food. Of that, only nineteen pounds of food was spoiled. Teachers wanted us to highlight the digestive system, so I traveled to Israel to swallow that pill. That's not just any pill, that's a camera pill, to give your students a virtual tour inside my body. That's what it looks like inside my intestine. This is what it looks like. I guess the videos, it pauses. But in the next slide, you'll see, this is what it looks like when you don't take care of yourself. Real-world relevance. Don't tell me about it, show me. We go to the next slide. We also will be conducting professional learning experiences for your teachers. The left-hand side has us working, performing dental surgery on a tiger. The right-hand side, we're dissecting a shark that washed up on shore. The very same facets students need to experience them, in my opinion, our educational leaders and teachers need it even more. They're the greatest ambassadors we have within this entity. Here's one we did with sea snakes. Very deadly creature, of course. However, it's a huge lifesaver, and I'll explain. What you see here is a sea snake eating an eel twice its size. Now notice the eel is biting the sea snake, but what the eel doesn't realize is, although it has a powerful bite, the sea snake has something even stronger. And what the sea snake has is venom. Now notice at this point, the eel is not dead. It's simply paralyzed. The venom from the sea snake disconnected the signal between the eel's brain and the nervous system. So as much as it wants to fight, there's nothing it can do to get out of this situation. Now you may ask yourself two questions. Why would I want to do that? And what does this have to do with the classroom? We'll go on the next slide. You see, this is us taking blood directly from the heart of the snake without killing it, and here's what scientists realize. If you alter the venom that comes from its fangs as well as its DNA, you could fight against heart attacks, heart disease. Ask your students in the classroom, how many of you all know a family member who suffer from high blood pressure? I guarantee you, at least half the classroom will raise their hands. What do you think is inside of that medication helping to reopen the artery? The venom and the DNA of a sea snake. Do not ever attempt to swim with jellyfish, I just love this picture. Well, we did an expedition on that one. Here's one on a complex subject matter, parasites. From upper elementary to high school, kids have to learn about this. What you see here is a wasps injecting something into a caterpillar. Now this caterpillar is going to get older and live a normal life, but then something starts to grow out of the body of the caterpillar. The caterpillar actually survives this process, and then its mind is controlled to spin a cocoon and protect the larvae that just came out of its body, because there's another type of parasite that wants to get to that larvae. You have certain plants that releases spores, infects the body of an ant, force the ant to climb all the way to the top of the canopy, uses the dead tissue from the ant, grows out a spore, the wind carries that spore, and the plant can reproduce. You have certain worms that want to get to different water sources. So they infect the body of a cricket, control the cricket's mind, force the cricket to go to a new water source, and then it exits the cricket's body and found a new home. Now, none of us in this room can survive without parasites. Go to the next slide. Of course, we take in some cultural stuff. That's the weirdest thing I've ever eaten around the world, and that's a bat, a fruit bat soup. And we go to the next slide. So with that said, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to learn about this community, engage with this community, and to really innovate something different. I'm very grateful to meet so many amazing people at your schools. I've personally visited every single one of the academies, and I see what Ms. Bateese saw in me, potential. With that said, I want to thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Hurd.
Well, no one wants to follow up with that. But, good evening.
Good evening.
We are grateful for this opportunity to share with you what we're doing today, to transform what it means to teach and learn, not only in our classrooms, but during the after-school hours as well. This challenge is definitely challenging, but the only way that we can get it done is by a strong team. And so what I would like to do is to take a moment to introduce our team to you all this evening. Those who are here, please stand when I call your name. Of course, we have Captain Beranting Irvin, City Manager Bunting, Dr. Smith, Gary Arterbridge with Newport New Shipbuilding, Pam Daly with DK Branding, Dr. Haynes, Dr. Cagiano, Seth Black, Kelly Gorle, Mr. Rogers, Daryl Rogers, Joe Johnson, Craig Freeman, Betsy McAllister, Sharon Dixon, Debbie Russell, Ralph Saunders, Shamika Pollard, Mark Dorsey, James Howard, Harris, Tonya Howard, Rashad Pitt, Sharon Graham, Hanif Majad, Heather Rudolph, James Ruffin, Connor Dunn, Philip Thompson, Karen Chang, Sarah Bella Rodriguez, Donald Williams, Michael Price, Mia Sumter, Lynette Heckstall, Albertina Jackson, Shawna Smith, Sherry Hildebrandt, Christina Kirby, Jonathan Sneed, and Catherine Elliott. Please stand. Don't, don't sit down. As Dr. Smith says, this is one division and one transformation. And the floating classroom is one challenge that we will take on and accomplish as one community. This challenge demonstrates what it truly means to transform teaching and learning, the secondary experience, and business and civic engagement. But we have one question for you all today. Will you join us as we take on this challenge and truly embody, embody what it means to stay student-focused, future-ready, to transform Hampton City Schools to one of the only ones in Virginia, to a wall-to-wall academy model? I don't know if I can technically ask for a vote, but, but we do hope, because we need everyone, not only you all, but part of this Hampton community to take this on. So as we all commit to you, we will do whatever it takes for every student, every day, and we stand by what we say, that we are one division, and this is one transformation. Thank you ever so much, and we would like to gift you all a little something, and then we're hopeful that you will join us in a candid photo. Thank you.
How do you say no to a member of the team, right?
Oh, look at the cap. I love that. That is so cool.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Henry. Oh, very nice.
You look good. Oh, man, this is just too cool. Absolutely.
Would you all like to come with the mom's name? Yes, please.
I can't get my hat. Oh, there it is, it's coming through.
All right, everyone look this way on three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Got it. At this time, we will, are there any questions or comments?
Any questions or comments from board members? Yes, Mr. Karnick?
I just want to thank you all for what you've put together. I want to thank Captain Irving especially for journeying to this community and really, you know, setting the stage for that impact, that challenge-based learning, the flying boat that combines the unique advantages and challenges that our region faces. Thank you. And this is, the challenge-based learning is rolling out right as the Maritime Academy is really kicking into high gear. So I can't, I can't see anything but greatness coming from this program. Thank you again.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Henry?
Well, you know, I'm very excited. And you know I hate acronyms, so we're not going to call, whatever you call project-based learning, PBL lessons and all that stuff, that sounds awful. I love challenge-based learning. That's just wonderful. And don't you dare make an acronym out of it. It's a challenge. It's about challenge, it's not about alphabets.
You're scaring Mr. Kilgore.
Well, you know, nobody wants to pick up a newspaper and read, oh, we're doing PBL lessons today. No, we're doing challenges and challenges about things that are fascinating and interesting and, and are just going to capture kids' imagination. So this is exciting and fun and delighted to meet you, Captain. This is fun.
I was actually blown away with that car that was created by fifth through eighth graders. I could not believe that. That is just amazing. But they'll soon see that the students in Hampton City Schools got something for them. So I, I do want to say, Dr. Smith, that, speaking as Chair, but just really as a citizen of the city of Hampton, I could not be more impressed with this school division. Every time you think you know where they're going, they take it a step further. And I think that speaks volumes to you, your staff, those wonderful teachers we have in this school division, and our administrators. This is just amazing. The Academies of Hampton have taken off in ways we could not even imagine, and I'm just proud and blessed to be a part of this school division. Thank you again.
We certainly want to thank Ms. Veronica Heard, our Academies of Hampton Director, for facilitating and coordinating this endeavor that we had, but also once again want to acknowledge our tactical team who went through some training this morning, then went back to school to teach and serve as administrators, and then committed themselves to coming back here tonight to show their full support for the challenge that we now have before us. So we could give them another round of applause. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I'm glad you mentioned the team again, and Ms. Heard, the wonderful work that you do. You know, a lot of times people say, you know, if you're part of an organization, you shouldn't always give credit and kudos. You know, it's like saying that your daughter is pretty, or my son is good-looking. It's like my mother Helen Berry says, people tell her when she says, "My grandchildren are pretty," they say, "You shouldn't say that." She said, "I got eyes." So, I've got eyes. I can see what's going on out there, and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and certainly thank you also to the staff and administrators in particular. Thank you, Dr. Haynes, and certainly Ms. Heard and Captain Irving. Thank you so much for coming our way and for sharing with us. Again, thank you. Thank you. At this time, Madam Chair, we'll have the FY 2020 budget forecast. I think our CFO, Ms. Brittany Dortch, will be presenting, and I know that so many of our staff members will be leaving, administrators, but again, thank you for coming, and our coaches and so forth, thank you for being present. Ms. Heard will now come forward and, I'm sorry, Ms. Dortch, and share with us the FY 2020 budget forecast.
That is a tough act to follow. But good evening, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, school board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. It is my pleasure tonight to present the fiscal year 2021 budget forecast. Throughout this presentation, we're going to talk about the budget development process. I'm going to report back on the school board's priorities. We're going to go through the governor's proposed budget, talk about some expenditure pressures, and then conclude our presentation with next steps and key dates. So the budget development process, it has five main phases: planning, data collection, review and presentations, approvals, and closeout. Right now, we are in the data collection phase, which started back in October. We have received electronic budget requests from each department through our new financial system, Munis. We are also utilizing Munis to do calculations electronically for our salaries and benefits. On the finance department, we met one-on-one with each department, one to train them on the new process of submitting budget requests, but we also utilized that time to talk to the departments to learn what their budget priorities are and their goals for the next budget cycle. And then we also developed a budget development manual, and this manual will really just serve as a one-stop shop to provide departments with information on different funding sources of the school division, provide some information on our general ledger account structure, and then also instructions, detailed instructions on submitting budget requests. And we're going to update that manual every year, so it'll be a part of our budget process going forward. So back in November, we invited school board members through a survey to give us feedback on priorities for fiscal year 2021. In line with our strategic plan, under the goal of maximizing every child's learning, Academies of Hampton Student Achievement and Reducing Class Sizes were identified. Under attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff, competitive compensation, compensation increases for teachers and support staff, and support staff would encompass all other employee groups such as our bus drivers and our food service employees. And then also teacher retention was identified. And then under create safe and nurturing schools, facilities, and capital improvements, and continuing our emphasis on school safety within all of our buildings. So let's look at the governor's proposed budget. So fiscal year 2021 is the first year of the new two-year or biennium state budget, and one of the first adjustments that are done is re-benchmarking the cost for the state. And re-benchmarking is simply recalculating how much it will cost the state to continue the current programs before any policy changes. And that is estimated to increase funding for education by $525 million. Sales tax projections were updated based on the Department of Taxation, and one thing to note, that anytime there's increases in state sales tax, the funding formula requires a reduction in state funding for basic aid. So the net impact of sales tax projections is around $59.1 million. Lottery revenue is projected to decrease by $19.2 million. And then the local composite index, so the local composite index, this is a measure of a school division's ability to pay for education costs under the Standards of Quality, or SOQ, and it's recalculated every two years. And based on the recalculation across the division, it will cost the state an additional $14.8 million for education. Specifically for Hampton City Schools, our LCI, or Local Composite Index, will be 2.2743, and this is an increase from the current Local Composite Index of 0.2741. An increase in your Local Composite Index is seen as an indicator that the economy is improving, and this is just based on the true value of real property, your adjusted gross income, and taxable retail sales. And you see kind of a history of our Local Composite Index for the last four bienniums. Along with LCI, average daily membership, or ADM, is another main factor to impact state funding to school divisions. For fiscal year 2021, our average daily membership is projected to be $19,030. This is an increase of around $575,000 when you compare it to our fiscal year 2020 budgeted ADM of $18,455,000. Now, we are constantly thinking through, you know, what's causing this increase, and we're looking at different data points to try to pinpoint some reasons why, but we are glad to see this upward trend in our enrollment. Continuing with the governor's budget, our Virginia Retirement System contribution rates, they will increase. The pension rate for the professional plan, it will increase almost 1% to 16.62%. The VRS Health Insurance Credit will increase to 1.21%, and the Group Life Insurance Rate will increase to 1.34%. Currently, we do not have the non-professional rate, that is to be released to us at a later date, but we are anticipating that that rate will probably increase as well. Compensation supplement. So under the governor's proposed budget, state funding is proposed for a 3% raise for SOQ, or Standards of Quality-funded positions, in fiscal year 2022. So that means that currently, the governor's proposal does not include state funding for fiscal year 2021. However, that does not mean that Hampton City Schools cannot provide a raise in fiscal year 2021, but it does mean we need to look at other resources in order to fill in the gap between next school, next school year's budget, and then fiscal year 2022, when the compensation supplement could potentially be in effect. As anticipated in the governor's budget, he's continuing the phase-in approach to change the school counselor ratios to get to 250 students per one counselor by fiscal year 2022, and we will discuss that impact to Hampton City Schools later on in the presentation. The governor has proposed an increased investment in early childhood education, about over $90 million, but some of those changes would include increasing the Virginia Preschool Initiative per pupil account, which is currently 6,326, to 7,655 by fiscal year 2022. Additional grant opportunities for programs such as at-risk three-year-olds, including additional funds to help with VPI waiting lists, and also increasing the VPI class size maximum from 18 students to 20. So there are some other changes that we also wanted to note. With the English as a Second Language Program, there's an increase in the staffing ratio from 17 to 1,000 students to 20 instructional positions per 1,000. Additional funding for at-risk payments, but also there is a projection of a decrease for the supplemental lottery payment. Within the budget, there are two new programs that we wanted to make sure to highlight. One is the Games of Skills. So currently, there isn't any legislation that is currently in place around the gaming machines that you may have noticed within your local convenience stores. So the governor is proposing that we would need legislation, but from that regulation and increased state revenue, he is proposing to put in money towards education. And then the second program is the School Meals Expansion. So within the governor's budget, there's $10.6 million that would be utilized to help eliminate or reduce the price of meals for students who are reduced-priced. So in total, the governor's budget includes over $440 million investment of additional funds for education, but what does that mean for Hampton City Schools? So currently, under the governor's budget, Hampton City Schools would see a net increase of $14.4 million over our current budget. Now, included on this slide, you'll see a breakdown of what makes up that $14.4 million. You'll see that most of that increase is related to basic aid, which would be attributed to that increase in enrollment. But I also wanted to note that you'll see a negative $3.6 million for the compensation supplement. That is actually the compensation supplement for the prior year, which in this instance will be fiscal year 2020. So within the state's process of determining the state's budget, they take out the prior year compensation supplement, and then that is included in the state funding formula that determines basic aid. So you can look at the two as a net figure. And then also, you'll see the increased investment of $700,000 for the Virginia Preschool Initiative, and then you'll see those two new items related to the Games of Skill, and then also the waiting list for early childhood, for VPI slots. So with knowing that we could potentially see an additional $14.4 million, we're steadily working through the Budget Committee team, what our expenditure pressures are for the upcoming budget. First, always every year, health insurance. We currently do not know what that impact will be just yet, but we do have our third-party benefits consultant running numbers for us, and we're going to meet this month to look at what that could mean for the school division. The VRS rate increases, that is estimated to cost us an additional $700,000 currently, based on those rate changes that we discussed earlier. The Hampton Employee Retirement System Contribution is estimated to go up by $60,000. The school counselor SOQ changes, so right now, we would look at an additional four counselors for fiscal year 2021, but then in fiscal year 2020, we would need an additional 19 on top of the four. So one of the things that we're talking about within our Budget Committee team is making sure that we prepare for the total impact of 23 school counselors, of course, depending upon what is finally approved by General Assembly. And that has a price tag of over $2 million for the school division. Then, English as a Second Language, any staffing changes that we would need there due to SOQ changes. We are looking to receive an additional 101 additional VPI slots for our preschool program, so that would impact staffing and resources. Additionally, staffing for our grades K through 12th grade, because enrollment is increasing. And then with a compensation increase for teachers and staff. And just as a rule of thumb, for every 1% raise that's provided, it would cost the division around $1.45 million or $1.5 million. Now, this list is a starting point. We are continually adding to this list and revising it, but that is a part of this process that we're in within data collection. So as we continue our work on the budget proposal, we're going to look, look through the department's requests. We're also going to look for potential expenditure savings along with pressures. And we also want to make sure that we align the budget with the school board's priorities and our division-wide strategic plan. We will be conducting school board two-by-two meetings and school board city council buddy meetings, and we will assess the impacts of any changes in our local contribution. And we will always continue to monitor General Assembly actions, which we have already started that work as Ann Bain has keeping us abreast of the different bills that are coming through. But I wanted to note that there's $200 million that's currently unallocated within the governor's budget, so we definitely want to watch and see if we see any increased investment from the money that has not been allocated yet. So before I conclude the presentation, I wanted to share some key dates with the community. January 9, the General Assembly session began and is currently scheduled to end on March 7. Mid to late February, we'll schedule the school board buddy meetings with city council and our two-by-two meetings with school board members. Then on March 4, we will present the proposed budget. March 11 and March 18 will have public hearings on the budget. And then lastly, on March 25, that is the scheduled date for the school board to vote on the proposed budget. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dortch. Are there any questions from any board members, from Ms. Dortch?
then in fiscal year 2020, we would need an additional nineteen on top of the four. So one of the things that we're talking about within our Budget Committee team is making sure that we prepare for the total impact of twenty-three school counselors, of course, depending upon what is finally approved by General Assembly. And that has a price tag of over two million dollars for the school division. Then with English as a second language, any staffing changes that we would need there due to SOQ changes. We are looking to receive an additional one hundred and one additional VPI slots for our preschool program, so that would impact staffing and resources. Additionally, staffing for our grades K through twelfth grade because enrollment is increasing. And then with a compensation increase for teachers and staff. And just as a rule of thumb, for every one percent raise that's provided, it would cost the division around one point four or five million, or one point five million dollars. Now, this list is a starting point. We are continually adding to this list and revising it, but that is a part of this process that we're in within data collection. So as we continue our work on the budget proposal, we're going to look through the department's requests. We're also going to look for potential expenditure savings along with pressures. And we also want to make sure that we align the budget with the school board's priorities and our division-wide strategic plan. We will be conducting school board two-by-two meetings and school board city council buddy meetings, and we will assess the impacts of any changes in our local contribution. And we will always continue to monitor General Assembly actions, which we have already started that work as Ann Bain has keeping us abreast of the different bills that are coming through. But I wanted to note that there's two hundred million dollars that's currently unallocated within the governor's budget, so we definitely want to watch and see if we see any increased investment from the money that has not been allocated yet. So before I conclude the presentation, I wanted to share some key dates with the community. January ninth, the General Assembly session began and is currently scheduled to end on March seventh. Mid to late February, we'll schedule the school board buddy meetings with city council and our two-by-two meetings with school board members. Then on March fourth, we will present the proposed budget. March eleventh and March eighteenth, we'll have public hearings on the budget. And then lastly, on March twenty-fifth, that is the scheduled date for the school board to vote on the proposed budget. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Are there any questions from any board members, from Ms. Dorch? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, Ms. Dorch, if you will continue with the business arts report, the financial report.
Yes. So for November 2019, our revenues totaled sixty-five million dollars, and this was a one point seven percent increase from the previous fiscal year. I'm looking at our expenditures and encumbrances, they total ninety-three million dollars. Again, this is an increase over the prior fiscal year of around six point nine percent. As part of the governor's budget proposal, not only is he introducing the new biennial budget, but he's also introducing adjustments or amendments to the fiscal year 2020 budget. And based on the reforecast that was performed in December, our average daily membership is projected to increase, and the current estimate is eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventeen. So with the increase in enrollment, we will likely see an increase in state funding, but that number will not be finalized until we do our spring membership report. So around late April, when that is completely finalized. So in preparation of that, we wanted to make sure that the school board is aware that we will then provide this information to the school board to submit for city council approval, the final state payments, based on where we land with our increased enrollment. And then as always, you'll have transfers to and from the technology classification for November 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Dorch. We appreciate it. Look forward to all those budget meetings.
Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes superintendent staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. You know, as I mentioned, we have so many great things going on in the Hampton School Division, and it's all rooted in the fact now that we are one hundred percent fully accredited without conditions. And every time I get a chance to say that, I do. And I'm so excited that some signs are still remaining around town. So to make sure, Dr. Smith, if you don't mind, if I could just take a second, to make sure that our community understands, even with our accreditation, how the state looks at that, is there a different rubric? Some people think there may be a different rubric for your size of your division, or if it's an urban school division or a rural school division. Do you have someone in your staff who could just make sure that the community is fully aware of just how that accreditation works?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would ask that Dr. Cagiano, our Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, certainly could give guidance and specifics in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board. So this is a topic, Dr. Smith knows I had a class earlier tonight with Old Dominion University, so this is a topic we explored that took a little bit over an hour. So in just a few minutes here, let's see. So if you think about where you go to school in Virginia, whichever school, whichever division, it really doesn't matter as far as what the set of business rules are, what those regulations are, what those standards are. We're all held accountable to the same system, right? And so sometimes we get questions from members of the community about, so what are the big differences between the new system and the previous system? And primarily, when we look at the previous system, at the high school level, schools were held accountable for something called the Graduation Completion Index. And then you had testing in the four core subject areas, right? So you had schools being held accountable for performance of the All Students Group in science, mathematics, English, language arts, and social studies. And what the state board realized after several rounds of testing is that if schools were doing okay, from the All Students Group performance standpoint, it was masking some of the performance of some student groups. So for example, if we take elementary school as an example, in mathematics, a test is administered in grades three, four, and five, and so the All Students Group is comprised of all of those students in grades three, four, and five. And so the benchmark for that particular assessment is seventy percent. And let's say a school has an eighty percent pass rate on that assessment. And let's say the next year, they have a ninety percent pass rate on that assessment. So what the state board realized was when they dug deeper and looked at the data, you would see certain groups, for example, students with disabilities. And maybe the first year, they had a forty-five percent pass rate, and then the second year, they had a thirty percent pass rate. But the school is actually getting credit and ticking the box for accreditation standpoint of surpassing that benchmark. So the state, what they decided to said is, you know, we need to take a more comprehensive look at accreditation. And so now, not only are schools and school divisions still held accountable for the performance of the All Students Group, but now we're also held accountable for performance of student groups. So for example, you now have schools in Virginia that are accredited with conditions because although they met the performance and the criteria for the All Students Group, so that they did okay with everybody looking at the, everybody who took the test, for example, grade three, four, and five in math. However, there were instances where you had two or more student groups who didn't quite meet that benchmark. So those schools now are accredited with conditions. So, you know, a lot of pros and cons regarding accountability, I think back to my time, first year as a principal, where students with disabilities were not even tested. And so I think about the gains we've made and what we've recognized here. It's a good thing. The more comprehensive picture has been a good thing because as our motto speaks to, it is about all students. And so whether that's a student group of students with disabilities, a student group of disadvantaged students, or looking at various racial groups, we now are held accountable for all students. So that's just a quick overview. I'd be happy to speak to numbers as well, or growth, or...
But I think also, if we could, to the question maybe more of same set of business rules regardless as to whether you're in Hampton City or whether like, let's say, my hometown, West Wallen County, same set of business rules would apply. It doesn't matter in terms of the school division.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
So whether it's a school division of twenty thousand or a school division of two thousand, same set of business rules that we are governed by in terms of accreditation.
That's exactly right. Not only for the All Students Group, for individual students groups, for Graduation Completion Index, for attendance, which now is again a part of the much more comprehensive picture.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cagiano and Dr. Smith, for explaining that more clearly to our citizens that when it comes to the state of Virginia, in terms of accreditation for schools, we're all held accountable in the same manner. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
And thank you for those reports, Dr. Smith. The next item of business is number five, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. I have received one. Ms. Bowers, would you please read the protocol?
Yes. Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may yield their time to another, speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters... The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attention and your input.
Thank you. Our speaker is Joshua Bruington.
My name is Joshua Bruington. I'm ninth grade, I'm fourteen years old, and I go to THE Hampton High School. I am in the IB program, and I have a keen belief that communication, connections, and relations with others can benefit people in many different ways. Whether it's with self-esteem, or having the ability to speak your mind openly, or just having an association with others, excuse me, that are willing to help you when you need it, can be very beneficial. So I came up with a statewide district five-on-five basketball tournament. This idea to host this tournament supports HCS Policies, KA, School Community Relations, JBA, Parental Involvement and Expectations, two and four of CA, Administration Goals. This event is to, excuse me, is to contribute to the advancement between districts, students, teachers, and parents, also parent involvement. We will have thirty-two schools in Virginia participate in this tournament. Each school must be comprised of a JV and/or varsity squad consisting of players not on schools' original basketball teams. Five, five to ten students, two to seven staff members, and three coaches. Specifics will be laid out in the presentation that I made. We plan to have organizational fundraiser to help pay for the event, and we will also reach out to possible sponsors. I believe that with your help, this event will benefit a lot of students, teachers, parents, and even other schools as far as with self-esteem, relationship building, making connections, or just to make new friends. This event will be beneficial to all of us in the long run. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have received no more. Have you, Ms. Bowers, received any down there?
I've not.
Okay, thank you. The next item for business is Items for Actions, number six, six point zero one, Approval of Interim School Board Member to Fill Vacant Seat. Do I hear motion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Kilgore?
Madam Chair, just to sort of frame my motion, back in November, Ms. Mugler was elected as, to the Virginia House of Delegates as the ninety-first district representative, and that created a vacancy. So we solicited back in November for citizens of Hampton that were interested in filling a five-month temporary appointment. And as part of that, we established minimum requirements, which is really, you've got to be able to vote, you've got to live in Hampton, but we put one extra thing on that, which was, we wanted applicants to certify that if they were appointed, they wouldn't run in the twenty twenty, May 2020 election. This was to prevent somebody from effectively creating and becoming an incumbent. We received numerous applications, nine in total, and what I can say, and I'm sure all the other board members would agree, we had an amazing applicant pool. Very impressive, very diverse, impressive skills, diverse experiences and perspectives. We were, we're really blessed in Hampton for the interest that we had in the seat. We heard, not only from the candidates, but from the public in December, and we want to thank everyone that applied and spoke. It really did highlight how impressive the Hampton community is and invested in the success of our students. All the board members, I know, carefully considered all of the candidates, and, but we also looked at the official actions and duties that this board has to take over the next five months. And most notably, and you heard the start of it tonight, or at least the start for us, is the approval of our fiscal year twenty-one budget. And I could go on a lot about how complex school budgets are. And Ms. Henry doesn't like acronyms, and I could just start, you know, talking about a lot of different acronyms, but it is a very complex budget, a lot of moving parts. It moves constantly with legislation that's going through the General Assembly, projections. It is just a very difficult thing that we do, along with the other duties that we have as board members as far as personnel or legal matters and things like that. And when looking at all the applicants, it became obvious that we had one candidate that had very specific and relevant experience, great knowledge of the division, and school board member responsibilities. So with that said, Madam Chair, I move that the board appoint former board member Monica Smith to fill the vacancy created by Martha Mugler's election to the Virginia House of Delegates for the ninety-first district, and to serve on this board from February fifth through June thirtieth of this year.
Second. It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Mason that this board appoint Monica Smith to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Martha Mugler from February fifth through the end of June. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Before we move on to the information items, I'd like to also give a special kudo out to this board. As many of you know, we announced the process for filling that unexpired term one day after the election. We announced it on November sixth, and we came up with a timeline, and we stuck to that timeline to this day. So I just want to thank this board for being resourceful enough and far-thinking enough to come up with a process, but also to stick to a process, not divvy from it in any manner, and move forward with expertise and a lot of character. I really appreciate that. Next item of information, the next meeting of the Hampton School Board will take place on Wednesday, February fifth, 2020. Can't believe, I can't believe I'm saying 2020 here, at Jones Magnet Middle School at six thirty PM. Also, under information, I would like to just point out that the Peninsula Foster Grandparent Program will be having its sixteen annual Martin Luther King Day of Service on Friday at the North Hampton Community Center. But the reason I wanted to point that out is because part of their projects, Dr. Smith, their Day of Service, they are making cards of encouragement for all the children taking the SOLs for the first time, and it is going to be distributed to third-grade teachers. Is that not great?
What an excellent partner.
I just wanted to point that out. Any information from you, Dr. Smith?
No, thank you for sharing that, Madam Chair, and no further business from the superintendent. Thank you.
Any further business from board members? Mr. Karnick?
I just want to comment on what has just happened. I, well, I've seen the slate of candidates that have appeared before this board with the unexpired term, and I've had no doubt in my mind that the students of this division, the teachers of this division, the parents that support the students of this division, they are all getting a fair shake. Thank you to this board for conducting the process in this way, and I'm excited to see a new board member come on in this, in these upcoming months.
Thank you, Mr. Karnick. We all appreciate that. Any other comments? Lost my gavel. With that being said, we adjourn.